At 7:30 PM. And I would ask, starting, I don't know if everybody has their screens the same, but Karen, would you start by identifying yourself, please?
Yes, sure. I'm Karen Kopta, a member.
Doug?
Douglas Lewis, alternate.
Margaret.
Margaret Minor, member.
Nancy?
Nancy Schoenholz, alternate.
Sue?
Sue Scott, alternate.
Okay.
Judith Kelly.
Oh, sorry, Judith.
I know you can't see me, but I'm there.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. So Doug, Bill can't join us, so Doug, I'm gonna move you up. Okay, all right. Okay. And I will proceed to open the public hearing and read the notice. The Roxbury Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 30th, 2020, at 7:30 PM via teleconference to consider the application of Anna and Grayden Carter, Assessors Map 18, Lot 34, located at 5 Charles's Road, Case File 2020-0083, variance to construct a shed dormer on the back of the garage, which would allow the height needed to build a staircase to the second floor loft, construct a bathroom, and repair rot and damage to the structure of the building. Reference zoning regulation variance 3.10.4. And following that are the instructions, at this hearing, interested persons may access the meeting, and following that are the instructions for how to join the meeting. A copy of the application was available on the website. Okay, so Brent, are you starting?
Sure, yeah, you start. So Brent Benner, I'm a contractor in town, and Anna and Grayden asked me to do some work on their barn, fix up some of the structure of it, there's a little bit of rot and other things, but the main part of what we are having trouble with is, what we need you for is the dormer on the back of the barn. It has a second floor loft, but there's no easy access to get there. It's like a ladder, and it's not easy to access. So they want to use that for storage space and utilize the barn and garage that they have and just fix it up, make it nice, and keep it from falling down and be able to use it. There's, we have a drawing of the back, the dormer that's on the back. Julie, can you, do you have those drawings, or can I share my screens just to show that?
Actually, you may have something a little bit better than me.
Okay.
Um, that's what I have.
Hold on one second.
I don't know if you guys can see that. I don't know if you have something more of a close-up.
Yes, we can see it.
Yep. So can I, can I share my screen, Julie?
Ah, let me see if I can give you control.
Okay.
Um.
Do we have the notifications to the neighbors?
Yes, sorry, I skipped over that. You know that to Nanette earlier.
So the, let me just, let me just explain that the abutters had been notified prior to the last meeting.
Okay.
Under the executive order, Brent was permitted to notice this meeting by placing a copy of the legal notice on the barn, which he did.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good question. So on the, what we want to do is add a dormer on the back. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
So this, here's a shot of the end of the barn right now. Here's a better shot. This is it. So we will... Here's, here's the barn right now, this line and this dotted line, and it goes down like this. We want to add this dormer so that we can get this staircase to get up into this loft space here. All of this exists, we just want to be able to use that space and safely get up there and use the space. So the other part, let's see if I have another... This is the back of the building, this would be where the dormer is, or would be. And you, this would be the front, the front would stay exactly the same, you'd still have these garage doors, you'd still have all of this space over here inside. And I've also talked to Wendy Walker with the Historic Commission, and she, I sent you an email earlier, a copy of her email, Nanette, about, she approves of it, she has no problem with it. It's really not visible from the public side, it's only visible from this backside of Grayden and Nanette's property.
Brent, did you just send that today?
I did, yeah, like maybe 7 o'clock or so.
Oh, all right, okay.
I have a copy of it somewhere here, if I could...
That'd be great.
Hold on one second. Need one minute here. Not great with, I'm better with power tools than...
You're doing very well.
Yeah.
Hold on. Okay.
Thank you, okay.
This email?
Yep.
Okay, so her email to John Blaney to approve him to give us a permit once we're at that stage. And this was from early March, that she sent this. I met with her, went over the plans with her, and she's seen our full set of plans.
Great.
Okay, great, thank you.
Let's see. I think, I think that's, you know, I think that's all I have.
I think you were about to show us the bathroom, Brent.
So there is a bathroom. Barbara Henry said that this is all interior space and that she has, she's, she gave me an email, I also have an email from her saying that that was approved, that we could go ahead with the bathroom. Do you know anything about that, Nanette? Was that...
I do not.
No? Second, I got an email.
So then that's not really part of your, what you're asking?
I think it was early on, but it sounded like that was a...
I, I, well, let's see it, I'm not clear.
Oh, there we go.
There's an email from, this is...
Wait, go back, okay.
Okay, this is from officially, this is parts from Barbara, and then this is Anna's response to that, so.
Um, okay. I don't know, I'm a little uncertain about who approved the bathroom.
Okay.
I don't think Barbara approves. So I'm, I don't know, I'm a little confused by...
I, I thought that was all interior stuff and that we were talking about exterior stuff and, and that. So Brian, do you know anything about...
Well, I think the variance is really concerning the, this is Brian Neff, sorry, concerning the dormer itself, expansion of the existing non-conforming building.
Unfortunately, the bathroom is, is part of the applica, is part of the application.
Okay.
Okay, before you close your presentation, Brent, could you talk about the hardship, please?
So our hardships are, number one, our hardship is the setback of the property. The barn is in the setbacks, it was built before the zoning ordinances came into play, and the owners had no control over the barn being where it is. They want to fix up the barn, they want to maintain it, and they want to be able to use it, and they really, they really can't do that, so, without your permission, to do some things. So the other part of it is the safety, they want to get to the second floor safely, they want to store some things up there, and they want to be able to use the space that they have without, without getting hurt using it, so.
And they want a bathroom for their workers, that's in the application.
It is, it is. Our last one is this, this bathroom, if we can, you know, it's been more and more clear that we need, we need people to wash their hands and to be, you know, be clean. So to have this bathroom is going to be critical for landscapers, tradespeople, and whoever else is working on the property there.
You know where the bathroom is?
Sure thing, hang on one second. It's in this back corner. These are the three doors on the front of the garage that face the road, the road is out here, and this bathroom would be in this back corner.
Okay, so anything else, Andy, Brian?
No, I'm just here in case Brent needed my help.
Okay.
I think, this is Brian, just one, one quick comment regarding the bathroom. Just for the record, the Newtown Health District has approved the, the bathroom connection into the existing septic for the house. So they, they issued that approval last week.
Okay.
Okay. So we're gonna proceed as follows. The members and alternates of the ZBA will ask questions first, and then we'll open it to public comment, or, and then we will have discussion that we need to further clarify the application, and then we will either continue or close the hearing and go into the regular meeting. So I think, can we go back to the gallery view so we can see each other?
It's Julie, I think, right? Oh wait, I think I have to stop share, hang on one second.
Yeah, you're still up, Brent. Yeah, okay.
Okay, all right. Just for, so we're not all jumping in at the same time. We can't see each other.
Okay, let me stop the share and then...
Okay, I'm just gonna, just for purposes of clarity, I'm just gonna call out people. Karen, question?
Yes, okay, I'm Karen Kopta, a member. It appears, Brent, from your application, as well as from the presentation that you just did, that you are not proposing any kind of change in the footprint, is that correct?
That's correct, the size of barn, the footprint of the barn is exactly the same, we're not changing any, any of the footprint of the building.
Okay.
Anything else, Karen?
Not, not for me, not at this point.
Okay, we'll come back. Doug?
I had, I had thought that the application, that the stairway was going to be on the exterior, am I incorrect in that?
Yeah, that's not correct, it's all in, interior.
Okay. And, you know, you, you mentioned that, you know, the goal of the homeowners was to fix and maintain the, the existing barn. They could certainly do both of those things without the variance request tonight, correct?
Correct, and we've been doing some of that also along the way here to try to fill in our time here, so.
And I noticed on one of the emails, I think the owner indicated to you that it was her opinion, you could go ahead with the bathroom, have you put the bathroom in already?
No, we have not put the bathroom.
And the third thing, I think you said, was that they wanted to utilize the storage on the second floor. You're saying that without this variance, they can't use the storage?
They can't, they can't easily use, use the storage. It's about seven feet up and there's a ladder. The only way to have the cars in there and use it like a real garage is to just have a ladder that's removable, because they don't have the headroom in other parts of the garage to get a real staircase.
When you say a real staircase, how wide is the staircase that you're proposing?
Three feet wide, it's a normal sized staircase.
So you can't, you can't put a staircase in there now?
Not, not, and still use it as a garage, no.
If I'm, there were three bays for cars, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So if you put a staircase in, inside now, you would lose all three bays for cars?
You would lose at least one of the bays for cars, yeah.
So, so if you just utilize what was there, you could put a staircase, but you may not be able to park three cars, but you'd probably be able to park two.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
And, and the hardship, you said the hardship related to the setbacks, but that's, that's not a hardship, correct? That's, that's the regulations.
I think Brian, Nanette?
This is, this is Brian. In terms of the hardship, the existing building located within the, within the side yard is something that is characteristic of the property, was, it was built back in the early 1900s, prior to any zoning regulations. So it's, it's an existing structure on the property that is, it was built prior to regulations, but, you know, based upon the current regulations, it's, it's non-compliant. So it's a...
It's a pre-existing non-conforming building, right? We under...
That's correct, that's correct. And it's a, it's a, you know, it's basically a structure that exists on the property that is difficult to, to work with without some kind of a variance for, for utilization and a little bit of expansion for the access.
This is Judith Kelly, but it has been in constant use. Am I correct? You have been parking and using that, right?
Yes, they have, yes.
Did you say yes?
Yes, yes, they have been using. I would say the other thing that makes it difficult with the, with the parking is that it's so close to the road that a three-car garage is, is ideal, that we can get the cars off of the road there and not be parking right, right on the street. So to have the space and to be able to use the space that they already have is, is ideal, instead of taking a staircase.
Thank you.
Okay, Doug?
No, I, I think I asked my questions, thank you.
Nancy? Nancy?
Yeah, okay, I had to unmute.
Oh.
So that you don't hear the dogs in the background. Hi, Nancy Schoenholz. I guess the question I have is that you're saying that you're, you're gonna need the dormer in order to build a staircase that's high enough so that you can get in, but yet the dormer is clearly extensive, right?
It is, yeah.
So, and you need that entire size of a dormer in order to build a staircase?
We need, I could show you the drawing here. Can you go to, Julie, can you go to your other screen? So we can see the dormer on the back.
And put in the bathroom.
Half of the dormer is, is for the staircase, I would say, and the other half is just balancing the barn and trying to keep in character the barn.
Okay. Nancy, anymore?
No, I think, I think that's all I have, I just wanted clarification.
Okay, Margaret?
Hi, Margaret Minor. Following up on Doug's questions, I think, I, I really couldn't see a hardship, so I, I tried to go back and look at the new, the new regulations regarding saving barns, and I didn't see, well, first of all, hasn't been, I think they apply to a barn that I guess the Historic District Commission calls a barn of historic significance. Is this, is this been designated in that way? The regulation refers to, nothing in the zoning shall be, I don't know, interpreted to interfere with making a new use of a barn of historic significance. And that's like capitalized, historic significance. Let me make a guess. Does anyone know the answer to that?
Well...
The Historic District has approved it.
I'm looking for something in the barn, the encouragement of reuse of barns to see if it could be helpful to this applicant. And then John Cody pointed to, you know, you could have a 25% more use, but only on a primary building. This is distinctly a separate building, am I right?
Yes.
The, is there any way of doing a compensatory reduction of the nonconformity some other place of the property? Do you have a garbage bin? What, do you have any other means of reducing a, a little bit of the nonconformity?
I'm sure we could find something and come back, yeah. We have a garbage bin, we have other things, I could talk to the owners and see what they're, what they're willing.
As I understand it, and Judith and Doug will know, the, the thing is, you can't, in a nonconform, I have a non-conforming building because it was old building, you know, on a small lot, built a lot, so it's, it is a problem. But, but I think that the, doesn't the regulation say you can't change it structurally unless it, the, the work reduces the nonconformity? Well, this work doesn't reduce the nonconformity, it extends it a little bit, but I was wondering if there was some other, but my proposal, I would, I would defer to Doug on this, I'm looking for a way that, because it's a barn, has it been used? Is it still defined as a barn use, or it is already kind of been repurposed?
No, it's, it's a barn use, I mean, it's timber-framed inside, there's a lot of nice beams in there, many of which we're gonna leave exposed, so.
It's certainly old, I mean, most of the structure is hand-hewn, which dates it to the latest year of the 19th century, possibly earlier than that, the house is dated at 1795, and I suspect that this would have been the original barn on the property.
Oh, it looks, it looks beautiful, I was just thinking, the, the, the new regulation that applies to barns, first, who wanted to make it possible for them to be adapted to a new use.
So Margaret, may I make a suggestion? Let's get through all of our questions, and then I would give Jim Conway, if he would, an opportunity to talk about how that exception can, how it works.
Okay, so to sum up, then, my questions related to any possibility of reducing the nonconformity in some compensatory way, do the new regulations relating to barns help the applicant in any way? And I was looking for a couple of other things, but those, I didn't otherwise see a hardship.
Yeah. Okay, Sue?
I think everybody has pretty much covered what I would be asking. I still have a little bit of a problem with the dormer being built with a staircase, same thing that we, I forget who it was that mentioned it. Would there be another way of getting, gaining access interiorly to that loft area? Without maybe having to put a dormer on? I mean, is it so, because it's so low?
Because the ceilings are so low that we can't...
There's no way to access it.
Access the space, yeah.
Basically, I understand the ladder, I was just wondering about the staircase design, was there a way of getting up there without having to put a dormer on?
Not easily.
Okay, that would be my only question.
Okay, Judith?
I didn't introduce myself, I apologize.
This is Judith Kelly, and I'm a little confused. I assumed that the bathroom was going to be upstairs.
No, bathroom's on the first floor, on the garage level.
I see, okay. And the only reason that you're going to do the, the staircase is so that you can bring things upstairs to store, is that correct? Hello?
That's correct, yes.
Yes, okay, what type of things are you going to be storing?
We have furniture, they have seasonal items.
I see, yeah.
You know, everybody has the stuff that accumulates and they...
Tell me about it. Okay, thank you very much. That's all I need.
Okay, so I had, just have a couple additional questions. The, on the application, you, when you're giving the measurements, you show an increase of 275 square feet. Is that the dormer?
So that's the, I was working on this with Julie, and we're not really increasing the square footage of anything, but she asked me to figure out the square footage of the dormer going across there, so that's...
The area under the roof of the dormer, essentially?
Under the roof of the dormer, yeah.
So, so that's essentially air, air that you're measuring?
Yeah. I wouldn't say it's really space that we can use, it's...
Except for the staircase.
The staircase, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Can you explain to us? I, I've heard the, I've heard the building referred to several different ways, and it looks like there are three sections. So I read about a garage, I read about a barn, and I read about a pool house.
So the, the garage and the barn are one and the same. It's a, when you're inside of it, it's a barn, from the outside of it, it looks like a more of a garage type of thing. The pool house is next door to it, it's attached, but... The pool house is next door to it, it's attached, but, um, uh, if I can go, let's see. If I could share my screen again here, let's see, show your picture. All right, can you see my screen now?
Yes.
So, this, this, this is the garage that we're talking about. It ends, there's a wall here, and this is the, what we're talking about. On this side, there's a, a pool house and, uh, um, you know, a barn over here. Okay, the other one is, this is the backside of the same building. This is the only part that we're talking about. That little, the bathroom would be back in this area here.
We, we're just, we're still seeing the exterior view.
Hang on, let me switch, uh. Yeah, this is the back of the, of the barn, the streets on the other side. This is where the dormer would go, in this area. Bathroom is here, and there's a pool house and a pool over here in this area. And this is the, this is the barn over here. Does that answer your question, I think?
So, when you say this is the barn, the, the second, is that where the garage is?
I think you were a little confusing there, Brett.
Yeah, I'm sorry, hang on, let's go first. This is barn over here.
Yeah.
This is garage here. And, uh.
The garage, I think, was originally a barn. That's one of the, that's part of the confusion here.
But, the part that you're referring to now as the barn, what's that used for?
Um, they have finished space in there that they use to, just, um, it's like a, um, what do you call that, Andy?
An entertainment room, there's ping pong table, that sort of thing in there.
Game room.
Is there, um, is there a bathroom in the pool house?
No.
Okay. I think those are my questions. Jim, would you enlighten us about the, um, provision that Margaret was referring to?
Yes, Jim Conway here, um, chairman of zoning. I would have to research it a bit, but the adaptive reuse of historic barns, I believe those barns have to be, um, conforming barns, not within a setback. I think when we get within a setback, that adaptive reuse, uh, has to be looked at differently. We can't, I don't believe zoning commission, um, will allow a reuse of a non-conforming building other than the intended use. But adaptive reuse of historic barns, if they're 75 feet off the road, go for it. But, any, any barn that's within the setback, uh, requires you, you guys, ZBA.
Didn't, may I say, say something? Or, or Jim, do you want?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, to my fellow members of the commission, didn't we have a similar situation barn-wise, uh, with regard to the Calder barn? That, that one of them was, uh.
Yes, correct.
Non-conforming.
Oh, it was very non-conforming, and the ZBA issued a variance, uh, like eight years ago. Before, about the time they tore it down, they got a variance to put it back in the exact location, and it was granted by the ZBA.
True.
I think they moved it back a few feet.
Well, it's pretty much right on the edge of the road. I know the barn well.
Me too. But I think they did, um, in their application, after coming here, and Mark Victor was talking, he agreed that by taking, I don't know, just six or seven feet off the front of what they planned, he solved one of his problems. So, I don't know at which stage you saw it, but they did.
Right.
They did do that, so.
Calder, Calder had two different, two barns, um, both of which were too close to the road, and one was basically put right back where it came from, and the other one, they moved back a bit.
Okay, so, um. Karen, did you have a question?
Um, no, I just had a, a comment when we were talking about the barn thing. I was just, it jogged my memory, and I thought maybe it would jog our memory collectively about the barn situation.
I believe, I believe any, any structure that's within the 50-foot setback, or a side setback, um, requires ZBA attention. Zoning cannot allow any changes. We did make exceptions for residents, primary residents, uh, can go change up to 25% if they're non-conforming residents, and we wrote that up for people with houses, obviously. But barns, we haven't got there yet, but we're, we're discussing it. But still, the non-conforming part will never be used for anything more than it was the original intention.
Okay.
Well, this is, this is Judith.
Go ahead, Judith.
Uh, i- isn't this basically the, uh, re, uh, the intended use? I mean, it has been a barn, it has been a garage since, well, the, uh, when it started in the, uh, late 1800s, maybe even before. So, it's going to be a gra, a garage, and it's going to be storage. And so I think, in my opinion, that it's the same use. Is that correct, Jim?
I, yes, I would be totally on board with that. It's, you're not totally changing the use, it's storage. As long as it doesn't go beyond that. You can put a bathroom in a garage, you can put a bathroom anywhere you want, as long as you don't have a kitchen sink and stuff like that, yeah. Bathroom's item, I.
As I see it, it's, it's the same use as when it was being built years and years and years and years ago.
But a hard.
For storage.
We still need to, even though it's the same use, there still needs to be a hardship.
Oh, I don't know.
I believe.
I don't know.
I believe.
I don't know about that, Minette.
Why not? How else, how else could we grant a variance if there's no hardship?
Take a look at, take a look at Wellers Bridge and, uh, Rocky Mountain, the Colnicks. They have a barn, it's, uh, non-conforming, just by a few feet in the front. And they're, they changed that over to storage. Obviously, there's, to my knowledge, no bathroom, but they're, they're, came in for the building department for, to retrofit it for storage.
The issue is not storage, the issue is if there's an expansion of a non-conforming building. In order for us to approve it, there has to be a hardship. It's my understanding.
Right, yeah, yeah. The Colnicks didn't expand, Colnicks didn't expand, no, no dormer, they just used what they had.
Right, right.
Yep.
Doug?
Expansion, uh, in my mind seems to entail, you know, uh, creating a bigger footprint, but the, and the applicant said that they're not going to create a bigger footprint, but the, but the regulation also says it can't be enlarged either. And I think it's clear here that, that, under any definition, they're enlarging the non-conforming structure. So, I, I would agree. I think you, you, the only reason you're here is because you're seeking a variance from that regulation. And if you're seeking variance, then you have to present a hardship.
This, Sue Scott, may I just make a comment?
Please.
Couldn't the hardship be the inability to safely access the storage area? Which was pre-existing?
That's one of our hardships that we have on the application, is our, our safety issue, that we can't access the storage yet.
This is, this is Margaret. We did have the safety issue discussed. I think we, we used to think we could do it, but, um, I think they're stricter on safety. Maybe somebody here remembers the case, but I think that would be a hard argument to make.
And, and the testimony has been that you can access it, you can put an interior staircase, it's just the owner doesn't want to do it and risk losing one of the bays of the garage. So, it can be done as it exists now, they just don't want to do it that way. I think the most productive comment was Margaret's, that maybe, uh, if the applicant could show us some decrease in the non-conformity along with this application, then we'd have something to perhaps hang our hat on.
I would say our other hardship is that we, this barn is built within the setback before, you know, before any of these ordinances came into, uh, to effect, and, you know, the owners have no control over that. They, they love this barn, they love the location of it, they want to keep it, you know, and be able to use it. And if we, if we had that anywhere else on the property, we'd be able to do these things that we want to do, but just because it's in that location, um, we can't do that. So, that's our, that's.
Unfortunately, the fact that it is in, um, the barn is non-conforming, is not, does not constitute a hardship. It's cer, it's sort of circular. And so, we've been told by our attorney numerous times that the, just the existence of the non-conformity itself can't, does not constitute, um, a hardship. Um, so.
Want to close this part of the meeting?
Not yet.
Okay.
Is, is Doug's understanding that if you gave up one of the bays, you could build a staircase?
I'd have to go back to our architect and see what, what's possible.
Okay. Sue?
Because, I'm sorry, this is Sue Scott. I was back when asked the same thing. Um, it's, it seems like if, if you could actually build staircase, even where one of the bays is, wouldn't that, um, solve the problem? That was a part of the hardship?
Um, it probably solves part of the hardship, but then we probably have, uh, more parking on the street, and, um.
There's three parking bays?
There's three parking bays, and we'd probably have to change one of the garage doors around, so you wouldn't have the look as you have on the front of the building right now, so.
Would the staircase be in the back, or, well, the back of the front?
Back of the building. So, we'd probably be back here again, like, looking for, uh, you know, changing the building by a door.
Yeah, there's not enough headroom in the back of the building to put a staircase up there.
So, it'd have to be like, sort of in the center?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So, one of the things that constrains us is if there are other ways to do this, separate from granting a hardship, then it, then it, um, it makes the argument for the hardship. It's supposed to be, basically, there's no other way to do it. So, um, let me see, any more comments or questions before we close the public hearing? Wait, before we close the public hearing, let me, let me ask, uh, another question. Would you want to go back to the architect and ask them the two questions that have come up? One is, can the staircase be anywhere else, um, that doesn't require a dormer? And the second question, um, does the dormer have to be as large as it is? Because if we give a hardship, it's supposed to be the minimal amount. So, if you wanted to do that, we could continue the hearing. If we close the hearing, we're going to make a decision tonight.
I think we'd probably want to, uh, continue the hearing. I can go back to the architect, see if we have another solution.
Yeah.
I think we could go from there.
I think the other thing to talk to him about is Margaret and Doug's point about, is there a, is there a way to reduce the non-conformity? Because reduction of the non-conformity makes it a lot easier to grant the variance, because the, the regulation is, um, that you can't, the, the goal of doing this is to decrease the non-conformity. Anybody else want to make, uh, have comments or suggestions to Brent, if he's going to go talk to the architect again?
This, uh, Karen, my, um, this has nothing to do with the architect and the staircase. I'm wondering, uh, are we all so sure that the safety issue is a non-starter here?
I'm not even sure I know what the safety issue is. It's current use is storage, or you either store something or you don't store something. I'm not sure, I even understand the safety issue.
The, the safety issue is that they're carrying furniture and, and objects up, up a ladder, and trying to get them into, like, heavy objects up over their head into a, into a crawl space type of thing, that they can't, can't access, and so, very difficult.
Please don't think I'm being flippant, but you, you just don't do that then. Just, you know, it's not mandatory that you store something, you know, in a small, tight space above your head, if it's too heavy to lift. To me, a safety issue is something that is, you know, maybe there's a traffic issue or there is, uh, you know, something else, but a safety issue related to a voluntary activity that you either do or you don't do is, uh, it doesn't, doesn't amount to one, in my opinion.
If I could just add in, I'm, I'm pretty sure we went over this, we, um, prior to the new law, uh, uh, new explanations, we did consider with the doctor on Church Street, who had, I believe Parkinson's, and, um, we did consider safety in that case, and I think we were, I recall me, think, looking at the law as explained to us subsequently and thinking, this is harsh. Safety just, doesn't seem to have, have a much of an opening here.
Well, I think, since the question has come up, if, if the commissioners, the board agrees that there is a safety issue, we can consult with Gail. But if we're, but if we don't agree that there is, that, that the safety issue carries weight, then I think there's no point in going to Gail and asking her the questions.
I, I agree with Doug in that it, it really is, it's an option, it's voluntary. And we were looking at the entrance, uh, previously, the only entrance for a, a woman with Parkinson's, and, um, you know, it was a very, um, it was, it was like a handicap access thing, and even that is, began to look iffy, so. I would say, I would agree with Doug that, that probably, um. So I would say, I would agree with Doug that, that probably the old-fashioned way of getting stuff up into a loft, at any rate, that, that probably there isn't a safety issue because there is no necessity to climb a stairs to get up there with heavy, heavy furniture.
One of the standards is if the building is usable without the variance, then you're not supposed to grant a variance. And the building has been used for many years the way it is. So one of the things I would tell you is about, I don't know how many years ago now, two or three years, several court cases, court decisions came down that significantly tied our hands more than they used to be tied. And so it's a lot harder to grant a variance than it used to be. Does the board have any more questions or comments? And then I'm going to ask Brett if they want to ask for a continuation.
No, I have none.
So do you want, is that your, is that your request, is that we continue it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So can I have a motion to continue the public hearing, please?
So both.
Second?
I second.
Margaret makes the motion and Karen seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay. Opposed, abstentions? Okay, so we will, Julie can work with you about it, about, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll talk to Julie, we'll work out the details, but I'll go back to the architect.
Okay.
See if I can reduce the non-conformity, see if I can redesign some staircase things and we'll move forward.
See if the dormer can be any smaller.
Well, I appreciate your comments and trying to find a way to work with me on it. Get it done, so I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're going to now, the, the public hearing is continued. And now I'm going to call to order the special meeting. It's a special meeting because it's not in our regular date. And also because you're welcome to stay, but we won't be talking about your application anymore.
You're also welcome to leave too.
Whatever you prefer.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye, Andy.
Bye-bye.
Hi, Andy.
Nanette, Nanette, I'm Jim Conway, I'm, I'm signing off.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Okay, any, any questions, please call, contact me, not a problem.
Okay.
Thank you, you were a help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, thanks.
Thanks.
You too, stay safe.
Okay, so I'm going to call to order the special meeting and ask every members to identify themselves, please. Karen?
Karen Kopta, member.
Doug?
Douglas Lewis, alternate.
Nancy?
Nancy Shaw, alternate.
Margaret Minor, member.
I can't see, I see one person in the client chair, so Sue Scott, alternate.
Judith?
Judith, regular.
Member, Nanette Falkenberg. Okay, we have three orders of business. I'm going to move Doug up. We have three orders of business. Well, now we have, we actually now have, yes. First is approval of the minutes from the October 7th, 2019 meeting included in your packet. Can I have a motion to approve the minute, approve the minutes?
I make that motion to approve the minutes of October 7th, 2019.
I second, Karen Kopta, I second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Abstentions? Does everyone have a copy of the proposed meeting schedule that was included in your packet? We, this is our first meeting, actually, of the year, so we need to approve the meeting schedule.
Yeah, I have it, this is Judith, I have it.
I have it. I make a motion that we approve the 2020 meeting schedule.
Do you have a second?
Doug, I'll second it.
Doug seconds, discussion. On favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Judith has asked for a moment of, before we go on to the next issue of election of officers, Judith has asked for a moment.
All right, hello everybody, this is Judith. Thankfully, you can't see me. Before we get into the election of officers, I want you to know that after much thought, I'm resigning my position on the ZBA effective at the end of May. This has been a long discussion with myself. And I find that I've spent many, many years volunteering on the planning and on the ZBA. And I find now that it's definitely the time for me to retire. I, it was a hard decision, but a necessary one. Of course, with my leaving, after careful thought, but I recommend that Doug Lewis be moved into my regular membership and the vice chair position. This is just something for you all to think about while you're thinking, you know, going into the next meeting. I think that he would be a wonderful person to take over this. And I wanted you to know that that's the way I would have done this. Of course, goes without saying, I'm going to miss you all. And hope that we can continue keeping in touch. It will be very sad for me not to hear from some people, okay? Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Judith, we will, at the next meeting, we'll appropriately thank you, but I can see from people's faces that people understand but are very sorry. And we will miss you.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Thank you for all your service beyond the ZBA and all of the land use work you've done. So my suggestion, since this idea is new to us and new to Doug, my thought would be to not act on this tonight. But I, I'd like to talk to people and to Doug and then to other people about their opinion of Judith's recommendation. So my thought would be if you agree that we put this decision off until next month.
Sure.
I agree.
Okay.
Sure. Sure.
Okay. Sue?
Yes. I was nodding.
Okay. All right, well then, we will put this off until next month. And with that, I would take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Take a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Aye.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well done, well done, Nanette.
Yes, as always.
Big thanks to Julie, thanks to Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Julie.
Green and putting things up, very good and.
Julie's.
I'm just wondering, oh, are we?
Actually, I'm going to stop recording.
Okay.